Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome back, everyone. Hope everybody enjoyed your month off. At this time, I'd like the board to look at the regular minutes of the June 26 meeting. If there's no additions or corrections, I need a motion for approval.
So moved.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Under recognitions tonight, we have two, two members of our staff administration we will look at in honor, you know, for their commitment to LaSalle-Pretontia High School. First, Mr. Harold Burr, a building trades class instructor. His class designed and constructed the new dugout benches for the complex, for softball and baseball, which is awesome because that shows our students at work. And there's nothing better than that than having our, you know, highlight our students. Mr. Burr gave our students, you know, the designs, they followed through. The benches look awesome. If you haven't seen them, they're just look fantastic. And, you know, the construction is so well that I believe future students for decades will benefit from it. So, thank you, Mr. Burr. Would you please come up and meet the board? We have a certificate for you.
Great job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you very much. Great job. Thanks. We appreciate it.
Great job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Dr. Chris Gibson. He stepped up and filled the duties of the acting principal with distinction last spring, which include his already existing associate principal of teaching and learning. He was instrumental in our cellphone policy committee, construction of the master schedule, helping, helping us move forward with PLCs. Looked over and took over the faculty for the last quarter of the year. He maintained the continuity in our school improvement efforts. Dr. Gibson did a great job. Please come up and meet the board.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Fantastic pitch hitter.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Well done, doctor.
Thanks.
Chris, great job.
Mr. Sarver, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
You're welcome.
Great job.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
There's no public comment this evening, is there?
Oh, sure.
Let me take a picture.
I'm pretty full today.
Thorn between roses. You're pretty spunky tonight, Sarves.
You know what? I'm looking forward to rosies.
Okay, there's no public comment this evening. So under finance, I need a motion to approve the bills of LaSalle-Pretontia High School.
So moved.
So moved.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I motion approved the bills for LaSalle, excuse me, LP area career center.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. The motion approved the payroll report?
So moved.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I motion approved the financial records as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Under correspondence this evening, we have a thank you card from Mr. Randy Gunya and family for the beautiful floral arrangement in memory of his mother, Leona. And then, under TIF reimbursements, we have the Village of Utica, TIF 1 for $29,894.91. TIF 2 for $6,590.85. City of LaSalle, $59,759.82. The Village of North Utica tax reimbursement, TIF 1, $58,257.55. TIF 2, $14,144.31. And TIF 4, $16,012.1. For total TIF reimbursements of $184,668.45. Under committee reports, Building and Grounds Committee, Mr. Ferrari.
Building and Grounds Committee met on Monday, August 5th. And we discussed the, the projects that have been going on over the summer. Everything has been proceeding as planned. Only two action items tonight for the board. The committee recommended 3-0, the expenditure of $65,310 for new aluminum signage for the Howard Fellow Stadium. And some additional signage out at the sports complex. I believe the superintendent will talk more about that in his report. Also, the, the figures came in for the windows for the baseball press box. And the board also recommended 3-0, the expenditure of $10,454 for the windows for that building. Everything else as far as security camera installations, the work on the Dolan Building, early childhood playground. All those projects are proceeding as expected. And everything's looking good.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Ferrari. Finance Committee, Mr. Murbach?
We met on August 6th. Obviously, the financials we looked at, we are, we're completely through the fiscal year. And we had reported 98, receiving 98.02% of revenues. And the expenditures were at 90.77%. Dr. Robleski reviewed with us the tentative budget up to date at that point that he had. And we discussed that a little bit. Also provided a three-year financing proposal. We talked about several options, but we recommended the first option, there's various reasons why. But the first option had a shorter amortization. We felt that that was more prudent and the way to go. And so I believe we'll be talking about that. We also talked about, we're going to get, pretty soon within the next month or so, Dr. Robleski, I think, a review from our wealth management group to kind of give us an update and status update where we're at, where we're going, what our plans are for the future. And then we also had a request from a local financial institution asking about the possibility of changing local depository relationships. And we are not taking any proposals at this time to do that. And I'll just say from my seat, I'm not speaking for the board, but I think we're very happy with our relationship we have now. They've got a lot of the wealth management and other things that we need all in one institution, and they're local. So it really matters. So, that's it.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Murbach. Policy Committee, Mrs. Alcorn.
Thank you. We met on August 12th. And we had approved the press policy 115. There was not many changes. It was, some of it was legal state law that changed some of the wording. And we have to follow that. The others was just policy and procedure and language and things. So there wasn't anything that we found that we disagreed with. So we're recommending that those policies be approved in this reading. The one policy, 116, was just delivered. It has some issues that we are looking at. Dr. Robleski will be spending this month looking at those changes and what we want to do with those options that we have in regards to the legislation that's coming down. The electronic device policy was rolled out. It's been in the newspaper. We've seen it. So on day one, there were 10 infractions. Day two, there were 11, and I hear that it's gone up and down a little bit when I asked. So Kate's shaking her head. But it is, it is rolling out and is being effective. We look forward to that.
But that's with 400 and some students.
Yes.
So let's put things in perspective. Go ahead, Kate.
That's fine.
We had, yesterday we had five. Someone said, today we had nine. We had 102%.
So that's, I think it's a great policy.
It is, you know. And I was, and the Safe Schools ID School Vendor Security System, we looked at that, brought it up last month. And we looked at it this month. And Dr. Robleski and staff have decided, after doing the research with other superintendents in the state and what we're doing, that we're not going to recommend this system in our school district. Okay, I do, I did attend the Resolutions Committee for the ISAB, IASB on August the 2nd in Bloomington. And some of the issues that were brought up to be considered was mail-in voting for the delegates, health insurance coverage, they want to go, they want to recommend that CMS from the state of Illinois run the state, the school health. We did not recommend that to the, to the committee. A cellphone usage, there was a big discussion about that. About charter school funding, every year charter school funding and charter schools have been a big item for the suburban schools in, in the Chicago area. And, and it's not something we deal with here. So it's, it's a big issue. Criminal background checks for, and that's part of the legislation for the teachers. But they want to make it even to board members and other service people who are coming in and out of the school, which we talked about in the, in the system that we just said we didn't, we weren't going to approve. There are issues in finance, state financing, polling places. There was a huge discussion on the TIF. They want every, the state to go back and look at the whole system. And they think it's antiquated and needs to be updated. And so there was a great deal of discussion on what that is and what we would do. And we are recommending that to be looked at by the state of Illinois. And dual language, and then faith's law, the new law that came in, there's a lot of tweaks that people want to do for that. Was a lot of discussion. So I was honored to represent Star Rock District at the table in these discussions. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Thank you, Mrs. Alcorn. Administration reports, superintendent's report, Dr. Robleski.
Thank you, Mr. Sarver. I would like to begin my report by extending an official welcome back to Mrs. Cushing from her recovery from her injuries. It's been great having Ingrid back in the building and back in the saddle. And, and we're just very pleased, I know she is too, with the progress that she's been making in terms of her mobility. And so we're very, very fortunate to have her, have her back in, in the building and in her role. Also would like to welcome Dr. Lang to his first official board meeting here, here as well. So congratulations to you in, in your new position. We hired three individuals. If you recall, that was one of the authorities, one of the areas of authority that the board invested in me at our June board meeting. And I've listed in my report the individuals that we hired. Mr. Kevin Kramer is our choral accompanist. He's replacing Mrs. Pam Engels. Kevin is a well-known figure in the community, in the fine arts community. And we're, we're very fortunate that he applied for the position. And I know he and Mrs. Veroki have had some time before the school year started to, to collaborate. And we're just excited to have him on board. He has some very big shoes to fill with Mrs. Engels. Mrs. Kaylee Hahn is our new school counselor, work-based learning coordinator. We hired her from Stryer High School. She had worked at DePew School District prior to that. And so we're, we're happy to have her here. And Mr. August Wilke, our afternoon custodian foreman, has taken over for Billy Thompson. And he started in, in the middle of July. And I think everyone is off, is off to, off to a good start. The audit is in progress right now. We, Mrs. Doze and I had a preliminary exit interview with Mr. Newkirk. It's been a very clean audit, no findings. There were only four nominal journal entries that he said that they had to, to make adjustments. So those are always the things that you, that you want to hear when you're getting an audit. And so we'll get our final exit interview on Friday, at which time we'll receive our financial designation for, for this past fiscal year. But I certainly want to extend appreciation to Jennifer, to Diane Burgagna, Kim Sell, Jennifer Riva. I mean, we have a whole host of people. But as it comes to organizing the, the audit, that is our, our core team in the office that pulls all the materials together. And of course, then just the, the exceptional job that the team does over the school year. You know, to make sure that our, our financials are in good shape. We had a, a great opening of school. I, I know Mrs. Cushing will, will speak on that too. So I, I won't talk too, too much on that because I want to give her the spotlight to be able to talk more about that. The only thing that I want to highlight is our theme this year is the Dream Team. And the, it's, it's a great timing with the Olympics. I also want to say thank you and kind of public recognition to, to Jen Riva, Diane Burgagna, and Tim Tomonello. The, the job that they did decorating the auditorium with a Olympics theme. It's, it's, they're little things, but they're big things, you know? And, and the time that they put in to create this environment for our staff to come back and feel so welcomed. It really, it does make a difference i- in terms of people feeling good about coming, coming back to work. So I'm just very, very appreciative of them, as well as to our leadership team for all the work that they've done over the summertime. And then the preparations for rolling out cellphone policy. And we're moving into year two with PLCs. And I know Ingrid will speak more, more to that. Just to kind of do a, a quick follow-up from Mr. Ferrari's report on our summer facilities. The, the stadium, if you haven't driven by the stadium late, please do so. It is really coming together nicely. And so with the bleachers put back in and the painting that they've been doing, there's still a lot of concrete work left to be done. And that'll all get done by probably the middle of, the end of October. But the facility will be ready to roll in time for meet the Cavs on the 23rd. And then for our first, our first home game, we've been in coordination with the youth football program as well. They had to make one adjustment to their, their opening weekend. But I think everyone's excited, you know, to, to be back in the, in the stadium, especially with a major facelift in, in, in many areas. And I think the, the signage too, the only thing I want to comment on that is that the branding of the district is, is really going to, I think, make the stadium work. Not only is it going to be appropriate for wayfinding, but it's going to, it's going to really pop. You know, in terms of the connecting, what, what the board allows us to do with the field to now it ties everything together with the rest of the facility. And so it just continues to be, I think we would all agree, the premier high school football stadium, I would argue, in the Midwest. So we're, we're very, very fortunate to have, have that. Yeah, the, the, one thing I wanted to share with the board is particularly because we have several board members that are up for reelection. There has been some changes in the election timelines. And I think it's really important to make note of that. And we'll send more information out to all of the, the board members. But the filing window, the timeline, the petition timeline has changed. So it, it used to be, well, the time, the time for when you can begin circulating petitions now begins August 20th. So right around the corner. So our, our members of the board that are planning on running for reelection, you can begin getting those signatures at, at that time. And then they have to be filed between November 12th and November 18th. So August 20th is a key date to, to put on your calendar, to start getting your, your petitions. Get your petitions picked up and begin getting your signatures. And I'll work with, with Mrs. Riva. We'll, we'll continue to send a couple reminders out to everyone so that there's no confusion. Well, normally I think you go to the county to be able to, to get them. And I know the past, in the past, they still mail them to us? Okay, so this, so, all right. So we'll be able to, for our incumbents, we'll be able to get those to you. I couldn't remember if they still mail them to us or not. Okay. So we'll make it as convenient as possible for, for the members of the board that are, are going to be running for, for reelection. We had two FOIA requests since our last board meeting. Those are listed in my, in my report. One, we had to ask for an extension of time based on the volume of information that they were, were asking for. And then the other, we were able to respond in the, in the normal five days. The last thing that I'll share is, and this is included in, in the second page on my report, I've included what we're calling the Fab Five, which is these are the five core principles this year of our, our focus on establishing a championship vision. That we are working to, to drill, we're working to, to implement and foster across the entire district. The only two things I do want to emphasize are, are two SMART goals. We're maintaining what the board approved, a focus on reducing our chronic absenteeism and increasing our graduation rate. But we're, we're swinging for the fences this year, when we believe we're, we're going to attain it. Last year, we, we, we set a goal to have a 2% reduction in our chronic absenteeism and a 2% growth in our graduation rate. This year, we are, for chronic absenteeism, we intend to go from a 28% rate of chronic absenteeism down to 16% based on what interventions we're going to be putting in place in our focus on relationships. And then we expect to increase our graduation rate from 84% to 90% by the end of the year. I'm just very proud of our team and, and the belief system that if we're going to, if we're going to swing big, we're going to swing big, you know? And I think they're aspirational, and we're excited about attacking these goals. So I have one more question.
Thank you, Dr. Robleski. Principal's report, on behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to welcome Mrs. Cushing back in the saddle. It's great to have you back here, and you're looking awesome. I'm just saying that after all, after all the things you've been through.
The saddle looks an awful lot like a boot.
Welcome back.
Well, it's great to be back. I'm very happy to be back at work. And getting started on all of our initiatives that we have. We have quite a few this year. As Dr. Robleski said, I'd share a little bit more about our opening day, our opening days, I should say, more accurately. That's the first part there of my report. But basically, we, we had a lot of things to share with our Dream Team theme and our championship vision theme. We shared all that information with our, our staff. We had so much to share, in fact, that today, which is not included in the report, but today we ended up having to call another staff meeting just to make sure that we've shared all that information with them because there was, there was just a lot of different things that we're implementing to help kids this year. As you shared, we've got those SMART goals that we're working towards. They're, they're pretty aggressive goals. So we are putting a lot of things in place to try to make sure that we can reach those, those goals. We talked today a little bit more about the pre-huddles. We gave them an update on the Cavalier Care Program, which is doing really well. We had 51 mentors come in and serve, ended up having 80 students that completed the program. So some great success there, and we'll continue that again this year. We also gave an update on the electronic device policies today. That's also included in my report. At the time, I wasn't able to give you any numbers. And I know we've hinted at different numbers here, but the grand total, if you were not adding all those up, we've had 35 total infractions. I think that that's a huge success. We were all kind of, you know, guessing where we were going to fall on those first days. And we were assuming we would have had much more than that potentially, even on the first day. So we're doing really well. As far as other things that we did on those first days, we also had the freshmen in. And we had almost all of the freshmen show up, which was another huge success. So they're excited to come to school, which is great. They were very happy to be here, and we're, and we're happy to have them. So off to a good start there. The other item that I would highlight, which is a pretty big change, and we have several teachers that are very happy about this, is the change to the tenure law. I also included a handout about that in your packets as well. It drastically accelerates the years of tenure. It couples the, their performance as well as their years of service at previous districts. There's a lot of different caveats of how you can earn tenure now. So they're very happy. We have some additional people that will be able to, to receive tenure a little bit quicker. If you do have questions, I'm more than happy to answer any of those about that new tenure law or any of the other items. Otherwise, that's all I have for me.
Thank you, Mrs. Cushing.
That tenure law's taking a little off administrators' plates, too.
Oh, definitely.
Two a year for four years is...
Yes, it will be helpful.
Especially with that, especially with that instrument.
It'll be lovely.
It's a nightmare. Director Athletics Activities, Mr. Hanson.
No comment on how I look?
Now you look better with glasses on. I was waiting for you to put your glasses on. There, there you go. All right. Now life's good.
And you look intellectual.
Highly intellectual right now.
Athletics, obviously, we just started on Monday. So that was the opening day for the IHSA. Things are going really well. Our numbers are, they're up there. So when I came into this meeting, I looked at our registrations. They're at 380. Last year, this time, they're at 356 now. I'll have official numbers at the next board meeting. There are a few people that have registered that have backed out. And they'll keep their registration in there because they plan on playing a sport later in the year. So I expect it to be up a tick from last year, so that's good. But coaches are excited and think things are off to a really good start. Weather's cooperated. That always helps. First day for competition is tomorrow for golf, so here we go. Next Friday is meet the Cavs, as Dr. Robleski mentioned. And then two weeks from Friday is opening day for football. Also, we have hosted a tennis tournament. We're hosting a golf tournament that week. So we're going to be busy this fall. But things are going great. The, the kids are really optimistic and looking forward to having successful years. Over the summer, just a couple highlights. You know, our Renaissance group traveled to Florida for some big-time recognition, recognition from Jostens, where they were recognized for their work with Harvard Home Room at a national conference. So kudos to them. And then Mr. Baker, myself, and Mrs. Baker, we've been working hard on our new, getting to know our new scoreboard and operate that. So hopefully, if you get out to a volleyball game this fall, you'll see some exciting enhancements to our, to our game night. Other than that, that's about it for the athletics and activities. We're excited to get going here. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
All right, thank you.
Director of the Area Career Center, Dr. Lang, and welcome.
Well, I'm really excited to be here. And I'm going to say I'm really enjoying my time on this side of the river. So I can't really take any credit for the things I'm going to talk about because, you know, Dwayne was here for all of this stuff. And I'm just kind of reporting on the work that he did. So Summer Showcase, it's been here for a couple years. It's really great when we're letting the students understand the things that are going on at the Career Center. So basically, they're here, they get to do some hands-on activities, simplified hands-on activities. And this year, they had 14 schools that participated in that. 64 unique registrations, and 31 of those 64 were here all day for the whole week. So they, they did 192 activities. The aviation program has been doing really great. great. One of the biggest changes for this year is it's a whole-year course this year, and it's split between, between two really big programs. So you have a drone piloting program and then the private pilot's license. And it seems that the drone side of it's getting a little bit different group of students. And we're working out the kinks on whether or not we can split it and have some students that are kind of taking part in the second half or the first half, that sort of thing. So it's still a full year for students that want to participate, but we've had a couple inquiries about halves. So we're looking at that. So there's been some preliminary work on the elevator. You guys kind of mentioned some of those stuff that's going on over there. We've had some electricians and a little excitement in some of the things that they were doing. We won't talk about the fire alarm. But, you know, they're, they've got some of the preliminary work done, and hopefully we'll get that going as soon as possible. The early childhood education playground, they've got the forms dug, the groundwork done. And I noticed today that they pulled the forms off of the border, the border work. So they're definitely moving along there. The enrollment for the Career Center, we're right around 400. That's been changing a little bit day in. The last couple of days, we've had a couple drop, and we've actually had some people add in. So that's some really good numbers there. But one of the things that I'm wanting to do as we move forward, I want to streamline the registration process. We've had some hiccups this year in terms of getting people in and whether or not the school allocations were correct and that sort of thing. So we want to look at what we're doing there. And then we're gonna spend some time looking at some of the lower-enrolled programs and what we can do to make them better.
Any questions? Thank you. Director of Communications, Mr. Baker.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you all again. Much kind of like everyone else is here, it has been such a busy start of the year times, a lot of communication out to our families and community when it comes to things like the electronic device policy, registration, even just down to where students can park right now and what do they need to do, pick up and drop off with parents. The other big piece, as Mr. Hanson alluded to, we spent some time over the summer in these first few weeks getting the handle on the big new video display screen that's at gym, the opening day kind of huddle with students, our first big test of it. I think it went really well. So I think, yeah, we're all looking forward to what we can do as we take even more advantage of some, some of the capabilities that we have in the gym now, both for keeping the energy and spirit up during games, but also recognizing our business sponsors and doing some things with that. So also, then, definitely, Mr. Hanson and I are kind of getting ready to ship out our letters to all of our business sponsors for, for another school year and hopefully kind of expand what we do fundraising through that to help our athletic activities programs. Aside from that, speaking against the fundraising, the foundation has been on break, not unlike you, and they'll, we'll be starting to get together probably in the next month to look forward to all the activities for the coming school year. That's all. If you have any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks. Have a great day.
Under New Business, 10.1. Before we get to 10.1, Jennifer Doos has a brief presentation on tentative, tentative budget.
I'll, I'll, I'll kick it off for us as well. Oh, no, it's perfect. Yeah. Absolutely. No, it's perfect. It's perfect. We coordinated this as well, too. So on your station, you have a copy of the, the tentative budget. That goes officially on 30 days' display, as does the ACC's. I just want to start by sharing that the only thing that we're still waiting on from a revenue side is CPPRT project, uh, numbers are supposed to be released on Friday. And as we've shared, we're expecting about a 25% drop in what we got last year. And that's what we put in the budgets, but we'll have that as harder numbers by the end of the week. And we still have two contracts that we have not completed in terms of settlements, teachers, the support staff. And then that also means that our non-union employees have not received any increases as well. So we put placeholders, you know, in numbers into the budget, so at least we can continue moving forward with that. I'll just, I'll end by saying that in our operating funds, at the Education Fund, O&amp;M Transportation, we are projecting a $590,000 deficit this year. Over half of those dollars are tied in with one-time expenditures that are, well, Mrs. Doos will speak more on the specificity of those. But we also had an increase in our ACC tuition, you know, that she'll, she'll be talking about, too. What we, what we've wanted is make sure, though, that at least where we are at this point, you know, that's, that is, is what we are projecting. So with that as the big picture overview, turn it over to Mrs. Doos.
Good evening, everyone. I'll get a little bit more into the weeds on our operating fund balances. So this year, for the Education Fund, our budget revenue is 16.765 million, with projected expenses of 17.293, giving us a projected deficit of $528,000. I do want to point out that the expenditures that we're budgeting for this year are less than the last three fiscal years. EBF is detailed out for you there. We are not doing a working cash transfer this year into the Education Fund. Kind of a little bit more detailed, we did have PAB increase for property values this year. We are projecting, as Dr. Obleski said, the 25% decrease in the CPPRT, and we'll find that out Friday on the final numbers for that. We're still using the TORT fund for risk management. The CTE tuition this year increased $140,000 from last year. That is something that will continue on into future years. And then we also have the ending of the SRF funds for, for Education Fund. In our O&amp;M Fund, we are doing a budget revenue of 2.146 million, budget expenses of 2.196, giving us a projected deficit of $50,000. We have around $235,000 worth of one-time expenditures for this fiscal year that play into that. We have a detail of them. We have the property house purchase, which is 50,000, basketball hoops and tree trimming, 46,500, sports complex concrete pad for the garbage dumpsters, 13,000, the Flares Granger cardio room, sound system and mics of 26,400, track timing house, sound system and golf carts and shed for up at the complex, $99,000. For our transportation fund, we have a budgeted revenue of 1.236 million, budgeted expenses of 1.247, giving us a projected deficit of $11,000. This year, we had an 8% increase in our Johannes Bus contract. And then we also purchased a mini bus, and we'll be purchasing a driver's ed vehicle for $134,000. In the working cash fund, we have a starting fund balance of around $999,000, projected revenue 392,000. We are doing a $600,000 working cash transfer to Fund 60 to finalize the coach's office and the stadium concrete work with a projected ending balance of 791,000. So summary of our operating funds, we're expecting a $528,000 deficit in the Education Fund, a $50,000 deficit in the O&amp;M Fund, and an $11,000 deficit in the Transportation Fund with our projected fiscal year 25 deficit of $590,000. On the next page, we have a little bit more detail about the budget for this year. So I can, I'm gonna start by reading off all of our beginning fund balances for fiscal year 25. For Fund 10, our beginning fund balance is 8,695,972. Fund 20, 2,832,832. Fund 30, 290,900. Fund 40, 1,380,990. Fund 50, 717,748. Fund 60, 1,680,283. Fund 70, 998, sorry, 998,871. Fund 80, 87,744. And Fund 90, 609,645. So looking at our operating accounts, Fund 10, with our budgeted revenue and expenditures, we plan on ending the year around 8.1 million for the fund balance. Fund 20, ending the year around 2.8 million fund balance. And Fund 40, ending the year around 1.37 million. Fund 60 will be zeroed out by the end of the fiscal year, and Fund 80 will be utilizing all of that for our risk management. We have a, looking towards the future of this year, we'll be looking to do a health life safety bond sale by the end of fiscal year 25. The next several pages are line item detail of the budget. Mr. Murbach, there will be a quiz at the next financial committee, so study up. So if we have any questions currently, you can take those now, or if ever one of us has any more comments.
No questions now.
Yep.
Thank you.
Great job, Jeff.
Thank you. Okay, under New Business, 10.1. In motion to adopt the resolution 2025-1 approving the tentative LP fiscal year 25 budget and place it on public display.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 10.2, in a motion to adopt the resolution 2025-2 approving the tentative ACC fiscal year 25 budget and place it on public display.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 10.3, in a motion of approval for the 2024-2025 differential assignments.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 10.4, in a motion of approval for the following change orders. A, Howard Fellow Stadium renovation, wayfinding signage, $65,310. And B, LP Sports Complex Phase II pressbox windows, $10,454.
So moved.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 10.5, in a motion of approval for the following application for occupancy, occupancy and/or statement of completion. A, main building, Building Amendment 88, water heater replacement occupancy and statement of completion. And B, main academic building, Amendment 85, coaches and counseling office occupancy. And C, ACC Room E116, coiling door occupancy.
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 10.6, in a motion of approval of the employee computer purchase program for the 2024-2025 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 10.7, in a motion of approval for Press Policy Issue 115, June 2024, second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 10.8 is not an action item. It's Press Policy Issue 116, August 2024, first reading. 10.9, in a motion of approval of the Bloodborne Pathogen Exposure Control Plan for 2024-2025 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 10.10, in a motion of approval of the District Annual Revenue of Safety Plans, Protocols, Procedures, and School Safety Drill Report for the 2024-2025 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 10.11, in a motion of approval for the Treasurer's General Obligation School Bond Renewal for Surveys 2023 A and B.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 10.12, in a motion of approval for the following retirements with regret. Mrs. Mary Kay Lamboli, paraprofessional, effective at the conclusion of the 2024-2025 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 10.13, in a motion of approval of following resignations. Ms. Medlin Pillar, science teacher and assistant girls' track and field coach, effective June 25, 2024. Mr. Jim McCabe, head girls' bowling coach, effective July 2, 2024. Mr. Dan Burkhardt, assistant girls' track and field coach, effective July 22, 2024. Mr. John Beatty, head girls' track and field coach, effective July 24, 2024. Mr. Wes Costellic, assistant football coach, effective August 6, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 10.14, in a motion of approval for the following appointments. Mr. Dan Burkhardt, volunteer assistant girls' track and field coach, effective for the 2024-2025 school year. Mr. Fran Baker, assistant football coach, effective for the 2024-2025 school year, who replaced Mr. Wes Costellic. And Mrs. Angie Hartman, part-time activities director, effective August 15, 2024, replaces Mr. Jason Miller.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 10.15, in a motion of approval for the Varsity Girls' Softball Team to travel to Myrtle Beach, South Carolina from Sunday, April 13, 2025, and return on Friday, April 18, 2025, to compete in the National Softball Tournament at Cal Ripken Softball Complex. Expenses will be paid through the softball program fundraiser.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 10.16, in a motion of approval for the Girls' Tennis Overnight Request to Bloomington Normal, participate in the tournament beginning on October 4, 2024 through October 5, 2024. Expenses covered by the Booster Club.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. On a motion to go into executive close session for A, discussion of the minutes of the meetings lawfully closed under the Opens Meeting Act, whether for purpose of